All right, it is eight thirty a.m. and I am going to call to order the council meeting of Tuesday, May twenty seventh. You have an agenda in front of you. Are there any additions to that agenda? Counselor Christie?
Just a nudge from Community Futures.
So nine point two, Community Futures. Counselor Christie?
If not, I'll move the agenda as amended.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously, thank you. We have also got the minutes from the council meeting of May thirteenth, pre-circulated. Are there any corrections there? Deputy Eve McGee?
I move that we approve the minutes of May thirteenth, regular council meeting as presented.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to adopt the meetings from the ma-- the minutes from the meeting of May thirteenth as presented. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you very much. So the first item on our agenda is going to be four point one, which is bylaw nineteen And so welcome. Hushpa. I guess I should say, Ms. Khalid.
Good morning, counsel. Today administration brings before you the third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven, the community aggregate payment levy. To recap, on November nineteen, twenty twenty four, administration introduced the committee to the provincial community aggregate levy regulation, along with a draft cap levy bylaw. This levy would apply exclusively to private sand gravel and pit run gravel operators within Neill County. Since its introduction in two thousand six, two thirds of rural municipalities in Alberta have adopted a cap levy. In line with council's goal to explore new funding and revenue opportunities, this bylaw is designed to serve as a potential revenue source for Neill County. On February eleventh, twenty twenty five, administration presented bylaw nineteen eleven, the cap levy to council. During discussions, council considered an amendment to the cap levy rate, adjusting it from forty cents a ton to thirty cents a ton. The amendment was passed and further discussions focused on gathering data from surrounding municipalities that have already adjusted their cap levy rates. Administration has compiled this information. To review, the bylaw would currently apply only to five private pits, three gravel and two sand, within the county. Given this number, administration anticipates that administrative tasks related to the levy will not significantly impact county or operator resources. The Alberta Sand and Gravel Association has expressed support for this levy, describing it as a measure that promotes the aggregate industry while also generating revenue for municipalities where these operations occur. Additionally, municipalities bordering Neill County have already implemented similar levies. As a result, eligible aggregate operators may already be familiar with this levy structure, which could support a smoother implementation process. Administration recommends full implementation in twenty twenty six to provide private aggregate operators with sufficient time to incorporate any necessary reporting structures and ensure a clear understanding of requirements. As discussed, council requested administration to bring back the following information. The first was to the twenty twenty three cap levy data from surrounding municipalities. In twenty twenty three, Wheatland County increased its cap levy rate from thirty cents a ton to forty cents a ton. And in twenty twenty two, Starland County increased the cap levy rate from twenty five cents a ton to forty cents a ton. These changes occurred to align with other municipalities around the province. And the remaining rates have remained the same since twenty twenty three and since last presented to council. Number two, reporting com-- reporting compliance from surrounding municipalities. As directed by council, administration contacted surrounding municipalities implementing the cap levy bylaw to assess compliance. Among the municipalities that provided feedback, over eighty percent reported full compliance with all private aggregate operators, meeting the required reporting standards. These municipalities emphasized that payment levy of the cap, payment of the cap levy is mandatory in accordance with the bylaw. The remaining twenty percent indicated instances of non-reporting among some private aggregate operators despite the mandatory requirement. The primary reasons cited for non-compliance were existing contracts with other municipalities, as well as no reported usage, which may indicate a potential compliance issue. Municipalities have the authority to enforce the bylaw and enforcement measures have effectively addressed non-compliance. Number three, the cap levy funds that were used for community initiatives based on the revenue generated. To note, the revenue generated from the cap levy for the county is intended to serve as supplemental funding, not a primary funding source. It can be applied to support reserves such as gravel reserves and various projects. However, projects will not be dependent on the levy to proceed. Neill County will allocate cap levy funds to the gravel reserve. In neighboring municipalities, some have used the funds for infrastructure projects, road maintenance and improvement, including programs such as calcium chloride desabatement. Others have applied the levy revenue to cover the operating costs of transportation services and support the gravel program. Additionally, some municipalities have used the funds to contribute to various community projects and services. Number four, major roadways near eligible aggregate pits. The relevant road information which was requested by council pertaining to the eligible aggregate pits are presented below. Of note, administration cannot portray where other future aggregate pits may be located at this time, and they could potentially be situated near other municipal roads and And lastly, council had requested administration to bring forward or explore the reporting process further. Eligible pit operators must submit the reporting form quarterly. The first section of the form requires the operator's contact information. Following that, operators need to provide data regarding their operations. Most of the information needed for the report, such as the total aggregate tons shipped from pits during the quarter, should be readily available. The form outlines exemptions from the cap levy. These exemptions include shipments from pits owned or leased by the crown or a municipality, as well as shipments used for the construction, repair, or maintenance of access roads to the pit. The calculation of exemptions will be a new process for operators, starting with the implementation of this form. Once operators calculate their exempted shipments, they must subtract that amount from the total aggregate tons shipped in the quarter. The remaining total should be multiplied by the cap levy rate, which is currently thirty cents a ton, to determine the amount owed. This amount will then be sent payable to Neill County. Thank you for listening.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions, discussion, related to this item, the community aggregate payment Counselor Cunningham?
So in the twenty twenty three levy data for surrounding municipalities, do we know for each of those municipalities, the estimated number of operators that that affects?
I do have that information. I can send that to you after the meeting.
Okay, so I guess for my decision made, like, I know we've talked quite at length that we have three here in Neill County, so I'm just wondering in comparison, because obviously the revenue numbers are significantly higher than what we're anticipating. So I'm just curious to know if their numbers, obviously, are quite a lot higher than ours are.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other questions? Counselor Phobes?
I just need a little clarity. So my understanding is, is that the peace officers are here for educational and community support, is that correct?
Mr. Hogan, do you want to respond to that one, please?
The, that is a component of the peace officer's position. And that's the general philosophy, is that we're here for education and support. There is also an enforcement function that they perform as well, in addition to a number of other programs, but that would fall under the community, community portfolio.
Counselor Phobes?
So when this was brought about, it was because council tasked you with bringing options to us, when we see more options besides just this one?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, when you, to Counselor Phobes, when you look, when you're asking about options and looking for clarity on options regarding other points to, related to the cap levy, or to?
When council tasked you with finding revenue sources, this is the only one that has come back. So I'm just curious as to what the other ones that you have found or sourced that would be appropriate for us to have a conversation around.
Through the chair, generally those are brought back during budget phase. So this one is obviously outside of budget, but a number of those discussions, when they come back, are form part of the budget, overall budget discussion.
I just wanted to.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Any other discussion or questions regarding the community aggregate payment levy? Counselor Phobes?
So what metrics or benchmarks will be used to evaluate the effectiveness of this bylaw once it's been implemented?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the, through the chair, to, to Counselor Phobes, there isn't really a benchmark in terms of relation to this bylaw. It's simply a matter of collecting a levy based on tonnage that goes out. So it's a matter of having that reporting and receiving the funding that comes in for this, whatever that may be.
Counselor Phobes?
So follow up, Ben, how do we determine if this bylaw is effective from a municipal standpoint?
Through, through the chair, I believe that would be if we're receiving the requisitions from the, from the current operators within Neill County.
So success will be measured by whether they're reporting and whether they're making payment?
Through the chair, once that, once that occurs, then we'll, right now, the data that's been put in front of council are estimates on our end. Once that occurs in twenty twenty six, then we'll be in a position to assess the amount that, that is being brought in, and if that corresponds to our estimates or not.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions or discussion related to the motion? Counselor Phobes?
I just would like the rest of council to know that I will be a no on this one. And the reason being is, is as a council, we talk about economic development all the time, and this looks like we're penalizing the current people that work and, and have a business within our county. So I will be a no on this for that reason.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other, Mr. Zier?
Thank you, just a point of clarification here on the actual payment levy bylaw. If you look under section forty there, it notes that the bylaw will come to effect upon third reading. Part of the recommendation from Ms. Collager is, is to start the implementation of this on January one of twenty twenty six. So if council does give third reading, just a modification on that point there, thirty, point forty.
Thank you for that clarification. Counselor Cunningham?
And just, that's good information. I know, speaking with one of the operators, there has been some jobs that have bid on in twenty twenty six, so that's going to change a little bit of their bidding process for that, so just so people are aware of that. I know there was a meeting between one of the operators, three members of council, and some administration. I'm just wondering if any of the information garnered from that meeting formed part of this RFD, or the information was used in that?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, that information was taken in. That information, the, that meeting, the operator was opposed to, was opposed to this levy. So the information was noted, but it didn't form part of the RFD.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other discussion or questions? Counselor Phobes, please.
So we know that one producer has come in, have we reached out to the other ones to see what their concerns about this might be?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair, no, we did not. At this time, this is a standard municipal bylaw. We did talk with the one producer who initiated that contact, but other than that, no.
All right. Are there any other questions or discussion? Not, I would be looking for direction from council as to what you would like to do. Counselor Penner?
I'd make the motion that council approve third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven, that being the bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment levy. being the bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment levy.
Okay, thank you for that. We now have a motion that council approve third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven as That being the bylaw to authorize the implementation of a county aggregate payment levy. Any further discussion? Counsel Cunningham.
And I just want to be clear, I will be voting against this as well. I know as a county, we're trying to create new revenue sources. I want, I want new revenue sources. I don't want to find new ways to tax our existing rate payers, so that's why I'm going to be against this one.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion? Deputy Reeve McGee.
It weighs heavy on me that we have such a small number of people who are in this industry in our area, but the reality is, in, in the wider area, it's a very common thing to be doing. I think this makes us in line with other municipalities and what is happening throughout our province, to what is a very important resource, that we need to also really find ways and means to recognize just how we need to be careful with that resource and care for it too, so that kind of record system helps with that component as well. So just so, you know, I will be voting in favor.
Thank you for that. Any other comment or discussion before I call the question? Okay, the motion is that council approve third reading of bylaw nineteen eleven as amended, that the, that being a bylaw to authorize the implementation of a community aggregate payment levy. I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Ms. Khalid, thank you very much for all the work that you've put into this particular bylaw, and for doing the research that we requested from you. Thank you, very much appreciated.
Thank you, council.
And thank you, Mr. Zier, for providing backup. The next item on our agenda would be four point two, and welcome, Mr. Conken, and anytime you're ready.
Thank you very much. Good morning, I'm here on behalf of the Linden Egg Society. They have requested the use of our water truck again for their egg days on June seventh. We have previously provided this service to them last year when they requested it, as long, as well as we, we provide a water truck for Three Hills Car Show Race Day as well. So there are some, the cost of that would be roughly twelve hundred dollars for, for the day, that includes the truck, the operator, and the water for the day. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Nice and simple.
Nice and simple. Okay, so any questions? So this is a request from the Linden and District Egg Society to use, have the county provide a water truck to keep dust under control for their lawnmower racetrack. Sounds like a fun day. Any questions or comment, discussion related to the request? Counsel Cunningham.
I will make the motion that council approve the use of a Neheil County water truck and operator for the Linden Sports Day.
Okay, thank you for that. So we do have a motion that we approve the request for the water truck for the Linden Sports Day. Any discussion to that motion? I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question, all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. And thank you, Mr. Conken. All right, the next item in our agenda is five point two point one, which would be the twenty twenty five Ag Service Board Inspector Appointments. So welcome, Ms. Sherlock.
Good morning, council.
Good morning.
I have before you the appointments of this year's ASB inspectors. So under the Weed Control Act, the Agricultural Pest Act, and the Soil Conservation Act, we need to appoint the seasonal inspectors and for the duration of their term of employment. So under this, we have full-time transportation and egg operator Stephen Ross, seasonal spray truck operators Alan Drotus and Kyle Painter, and seasonal vegetation management technicians Kelsey Ratzloff and Russell Owen Olson. I also nicely took a quick photo of everybody this morning to show council. So this is our egg crew. I got them before they really started the day, so they're still smiling at me. Yeah, exactly. It was nice and quiet this morning. So yes, that is, that is our seasonal team. They will be handling our weed inspections and, and spraying, so roadside spraying, spot spraying, any of the noxious weed control within the county, as well as the pest surveys and inspections for that as well. So with that, the recommended motion I have is for council to appoint them as inspectors for the term of their employment.
All right, is there any questions or discussion? If not, I would look for a motion to appoint. Deputy Reeve McGee.
This is an outstanding service that we have in our community, and I really am pleased to make the motion that we appoint for the term of their employment with Neheil County, Stephen Ross, Alan Drotus, Kyle Painter, Kelsey Ratzloff, and Russell Olson, as weed and pest inspectors, soil conservation officers for Neheil County, under the Alberta Weed Control, Agricultural Pest, and Soil Conservation Acts.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion to appoint. Is there any discussion to that motion? Counsel Christie.
Just a comment, I appreciate that most of them have been here for a while, so thank you.
Yes.
All right, any other discussion? So the motion is that council appoints for the term of their employment under the Neheil County, or with Neheil County, sorry, Stephen Ross, Alan Drotus, Kyle Painter, Kelly Ratzloff, and Russell Olson as weed and pest inspectors and soil conservation officers for Neheil County under the Alberta Weed Control, Agriculture, Pest, and Soil Conservation Act. If there's no further discussion, I'm going to call the question, all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously, so thank you very much, Ms. Sherlock.
Through the Reeve.
Sure, Counsel Penner.
Sorry, through the Reeve, through Mr. Hogan. With this wind the last few days, just putting in, while you're in the hot seat, sorry.
Absolutely.
Just a few of the residents of Swallow visited with me because we lost another tree yesterday, or another branch yesterday, and they just had questions out there about the, have the trees been surveyed and stuff like that? And I said they had, we had done tree surveys not that long ago. So just wondering about, because some of those trees are old and the condition of them, there seems to be more and more of them falling.
Absolutely. So yeah, a lot of the trees in our area are remnants of the, of the federal Shelter Belt Program, so they are getting up there in age. Within the parks and cemeteries, so parks, cemeteries, campgrounds, those spaces, those fall under our supervision, and those we do annually go through, just in our day-to-day, review them. We typically have a contractor come in and do some work on ones that we see are starting to fail. With that, there are trees in the hamlets that are outside of our responsibility, either ones on private land, or even those along county roadways, those fall to transportation. And so that would be up to their annual surveys and, and observations. I do know that there are some that the property lines would need to be checked because it's been so long since those trees have been put in. But, but yeah, the ones that, within our parks, cemeteries, and campgrounds, we do annually try to inspect, and as soon as we find issues, we try to make sure that those are cleaned up. So if anybody does notice something failing, or branches that have fallen, we're more than happy to go and get that cleaned up.
Go ahead, Counsel Penner.
So just furthermore to that, so if a resident, this, they feel, they hear the creaking and whatnot else, they can just send in a concern to work out whether it's on their property line, you know, if it's on their property or the county's property, what's the best way to do, for them to report it, or to get, if they're concerned about the trees?
If it's within a park, cemetery, or campground, it can come to, to my team with, within Park Snack Services. Transportation and infrastructure would be responsible for the others.
Okay, so I'll just tell them to fill out the, the concern report, and you guys will work out which departments will deal with it and get that to them.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
The other point of clarification, if it's on private property, that responsibility basically lies with the property owner?
Yes.
Okay, and sometimes you said that can be a little bit in question because of where the property lines might lie. So if they have a concern about a tree that they're not sure, then?
Contact us.
It's worthwhile to report it.
Yep.
Find out where it's at and determine who's responsible for it.
Yeah, absolutely. And those within utility right of ways also, there are other individuals and organizations involved as well. So if, if you're unsure, ask, and we'll try to find those answers.
Super, thank you very much.
No problem.
Okay, Counsel Christie.
Just a comment, the last two years of drought has been extremely hard on our Shelter Belt trees and stuff, where a lot of them aren't surviving.
Okay, we have delegation and appointment at nine, so we'll come back to our regular agenda at that point, and we'll take a brief recess, like two minutes, to allow Ms. Clark and Ms. Jackson Berry to get prepared to present to us as council. Okay, so I'm going to call us back from our recess, and we have a presentation here this morning from the FCSS Community Coach, Ms. Michaela Clark, and certainly welcome. And I see you brought back up in the form of Ms. Jackson Berry, so also welcome, Shelley. And Michaela, we're looking forward to hearing from you this morning, and anytime you are ready.
Fabulous, thank you so much. So as Ken explained, my name is Michaela Clark, and I am the Neheil Community Support Coach, and I have been so for three years, and this is the annual report for 2024. So just to give a overview of the position, so the position for the Neheil Community Support Coach was created in 2021 in partnership between Neheil Regional Family and Community Support Services, the six municipalities of Acme Carbon, Linden, Three Hills, Troschu, and Neheil County, as well as Golden Hill School Division. And it's really to help maintain and strengthen the quality of life of all residents participating, or in the participating municipalities, by supporting volunteerism, providing preventative educational, or, and social initiative programs, sorry. So as part of this position, my job is to plan and to facilitate evidence-based programs that are, to promote the social and emotional well-being for children, youth, and families in all of the six municipalities. This is done also in collaboration with the family wellness workers, where they help to identify areas of needs in the community. They help me advertise my programs and vice versa. They refer people to attend my programs, and when there is additional needs that need to be met, there, I also refer back to the family wellness program, so we work really well together. Just an overview, this is the 2024 financials, and this is the total of seventy-one thousand nine hundred and ninety-two and sixty-seven cents between Neheil Regional FCSS, all the municipalities, and Golden Hill School Division. So in 2024, we did a lot of things that helped to teach the social and emotional skills. So I am just going to give you guys 2024 at a glance. So we ran an amazing knee program, which was really to help teach elementary-age kids about self-esteem, positive body confidence, and empathy and compassion for others. We also did kindness fun days on those weeks off from school in February and April, where they learned the six concepts of kindness of respect, caring, inclusiveness, integrity, responsibility, and courage. And they did a kindness art project. We also did a six-week program about kindness captains junior, where they also learned the same six concepts of kindness, but they did a leadership activity where they actually planned and organized food hampers to donate to the Carbon Food Bank. So that was really amazing. We also ran Girl Circle, which is a structured peer support group for girls, where it helped to build resiliency, self-esteem, self-awareness, personal skills, and positive peer connections on the themes of friendship and expressing their individuality. We also ran a summer camp where they learned how to improve their well-being through mindfulness, moving their bodies, being mindful of what food they eat and how that influences themselves, and being connected to themselves and others. and being connected to themselves and others. We did a zone patrol program where elementary age kids learned how to identify and regulate their emotions to solve problems and to be resilient. And we ran a youth skills program where teenagers ages 14 to 18 learned basic life skill information with cooking and meal planning, anxiety to calm, which was, that one was a six-week program, a cost of real life and post-secondary education information session. We have also been doing a families connect through art, which is where once a month now, parents and their children and youth participate in art activities side by side to creatively express themselves, gain aware, gain self-awareness and to open the door of communication with their family members. So in 2024, there were a total of 64 programs that were offered, 35 of which were facilitated. Because we offered a lot of different things, I broke it down not only by the locations that they were, but also half of them were multi-session programs, which were like the five-week, the six-week, the eight-week ones. And then we also had single sessions, which are like the youth skills zones or the family connecting through art sessions. So that's kind of how that all laid out. And most of the single sessions were in Three Hills because that's where our office is. In regards to outputs, we have program outputs that include 86% of program attendance. So if they were expected to be in the seat, they were there 86% of the time. There were a total of 149 sessions facilitated that took 432 hours and then there was 717 planning hours to plan these programs. In regards to volunteer outputs, there were a total of seven volunteers, three of which were youth, and the youth actually contributed 61 hours of that total. And the other ones were the youth skills zone mostly. In regards to the participant outcome, or sorry, outputs, there were 150 unique participants. That means that they attended at least one program. Forty-six of them participated in multiple programs and 29 were at some point in 2024 connected with a family wellness worker. So participant outputs include self-esteem, where 96% of participants reported that the program helped them to understand that it is okay to be themselves and 90% reported that the program helped them to feel good about themselves more often. In regards to interpersonal skills, participant, sorry, 89% of participants reported that they are better at naming their feelings. 71% participants reported that they are better at telling others about their feelings and 95% of participants reported that they get along better with others. So I, at the end of every program, I always ask some open-ended questions of like, what did you like most about this program? What is something that you learned from this program? And if there's anything else you want to tell us? So these are some of the participant ones, which include, I have learned to be less hard on myself and how to cheer myself up easier, that it is okay to mess up and to not give up. When Ms. M taught us how to handle madness. I like that this is a safe place to express myself and to find out more about yourself and how it can help you and that it's okay to be me. At the end of every program, I also send out a email to parents to fill out a survey and 98% of them said that the program helped their child or teen to feel good about themselves and that they would be interested in similar programming in the future. In regards to some parent quotes, because I also ask them open-ended questions of if there's anything you would like to tell us, some include that the commentary from my daughter was always full of excitement and the things that she would learn were so good for her self-esteem. My daughter is difficult to get out to interact with the community. She reluctantly agreed to Girl Circle and liked it and stayed, so that speaks volumes and she made some new friends there too. Improving her self-awareness by being appropriate, one of her favorite times is learning about mindfulness with many ways being outlined, experiencing and choosing the one that she likes to do and to practice at home. And it was really amazing seeing my son paint and do art so freely. He has been working on his anxiety and it was great to see him let go. Some of the trends that were observed over 2024 is that some of them are the same as previous years where small group sizes continue to foster trusting relationships and positive peer support. Participants openly and actively engage in explicit social and emotional teachings and conversations, especially when they're paired with interactive activities because they're more hands-on. A higher percentage of registration and attendance is more elementary than the teenagers and that goes the same with family programming. In regards to some new trends, it's consistency in programming days, times, location, age ranges and programs has promoted increased awareness and participation. Increased program facilitation opportunities due to established programs, processes and relationships with communities. So it's all gotten way more efficient, which is fabulous. And there's just been so much positive feedback about all of it from participants, parents, community members, agencies. It's just all a lot of positive feedback, so. I just want to say a really big thank you to all of the people who have made 2024 programs possible, including all of municipalities, all of the schools and the principals who have let me use space there and helped advertise these programs, as well as all to the volunteers who have volunteered either their time or their space within the community. So thank you, everybody. And I just want to thank you guys for letting me come here and speak on all of the amazing things that have been happening in this position and invite if you guys have any questions, I am welcome to answer them. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Michaela, for that presentation. Are there questions from council or comments? This is your opportunity. Counselor Christie.
Just a comment, it's money well spent when I look at the budget and then all the stuff that you've done, you've done very well, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I do have a question. This is just outstanding, I agree with Counselor Christie, outstanding use of money. I, I believe, not much different than the analogy of to build a strong house, you need a strong foundation. And this is what this is doing, is giving a strong foundation to everything that makes community great. It's the children growing into being great individuals. And so there, there isn't one department in municipal government or education or provincial government that shouldn't be really excited about this type of program. Having said that, my question is, have you ever been asked to share your format on this program with other agencies or school divisions or municipalities so that that maybe might be mirrored in other places?
I haven't specifically been approached and asked, but I do attend like an FCSS kind of all over the province meeting, I think it's like once every two months where we share ideas or struggles or things that are going well to continue to develop the programs for children and youth in a way that is beneficial for them and kind of what trends we see. So teenagers are hard to get out and that's a common theme throughout the province or just different themes that are, are there. And so I go and I share the ideas and they have, actually they have asked, they're like, especially with my art one or like the Girl Circle one, like they've asked more about that. Yes, so.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Counselor Penner.
Just a comment, it's, it's great to see the community support, whether it's business or associations that look like supporting what you're doing and hopefully that improves and we, they, they realize how valuable the FCSS program is, that more come forward and support it. Just on the wellbeing since, from the consequences of the COVID, have you seen the wellbeing improved greatly like since then? Because it was pretty sad back then.
It was. I think, I think it's kind of shifted a little bit in regards to now that things are more open in regards to like programs are open and like summer camps are open and just everybody's back at school. I think that the, the content is now more like, how do we interact more with others? And a lot of like friendship skill things and how do we continue to talk and, and problem solve and understand that different people have different perspectives and different ideas and how do we navigate those? Whereas I, yeah, so it's been a shift from maybe more of the really deep, heavy emotional stuff, because I mean, even as adults, like it was a time during COVID. So going from that really big, 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 big stuff, now it's more kind of typical friendship skills as well and just how to interact with other people and just confidence in themselves.
Sure. No, thanks for that and thank you for coming in this morning.
Thank you.
All right, Counselor Cunningham.
So next time you offer a cooking class, sign me up.
I know. So I, that's why I have to get volunteers to come in and do this because I say as an expert in the area, like if it was baking, I'd totally be able to do it, but cooking, I will be very honest, is not one of my strong suits if it's like not one of my five things and I get done. But yeah, no, it was really cool and the kids really got hands-on and they were like, because they made chicken noodle soup and just the ability to know how to make a cost-effective meal that is actually healthy and it's sustainable. And I got feedback, what is it? There's even one that it's like, it's a cooking, cooking a quick and healthy recipe that I can use in university. So they're already thinking about like the longevity of when they're out on their own and they are being more independent, how can they, you know, use those life skills rather than just, yeah, just to also support their nutrition and stuff during that.
That's perfect. And the six concepts of kindness, I think that's something that could transcend to adults too in the world we're living in right now, so. And I just want to really say a shout out to the volunteerism piece with the youth. We talk a lot about in our communities about how our volunteers are aging out and how we're going to get that younger generation involved. So that's, that's, I would love to see that. Maybe just a question for Ms. Jackson Berry, maybe not as a fun one, but I haven't gone through it detailed, but what are we hearing in terms of the Alberta budget for FCSS programming?
Well, so it's a, you know, I guess there's been no increase and there hasn't been for a number of years. So, but unfortunately, what we hear is you should be happy it wasn't decreased. So they seem to be happy with the status quo. Yeah.
Counselor Christie.
Just a question, I see Red Deer Polytechnics in there and the comments from the students that gives them access to college and they, they qualify. We need Old College on that list. So have they been approached and if not, can we approach them again?
Sorry, can you just say that one more time?
Is, was Old College approached for support and maybe we should push them a little?
So it really was specifically, Michaela was looking for someone to do post-secondary scholarships, like it was much more broader. And so it was, she talked to a few different places and, and then decided that Red Deer Polytech, so they did a fairly general thing about how youth could apply for scholarships and stuff. So it was just a volunteer that they, they sent out, it wasn't financial.
Yeah, so basically.
Does that help explain it?
Yep, but Old College must have volunteers too.
Yeah, no, I, I understand. So I think the reason that I, like, I did reach out to multiple, multiple ones, but Red Deer Polytech was really great because they do also offer like a variety of programs. They offer like, like blended programs, they offer trades programs, they offer like more like, I don't know, they offer engineering and like there's just a really big variety. And they didn't specifically say, hey, this is all the Red Deer Polytech stuff. I mean, there was like a little bit of that, but it was very, very general as in like, hey, just so you know, like scholarships are out there or that, you know, when you're considering applying to a post-secondary education, wherever you decide to go, like, is campus life really important to you? Is it more like, how do you figure out what requirements do you need for courses? And just understanding, yes, it's going to be different on each, each school, right? Because they all have different criteria and so on and so forth, but just kind of things to generally keep in mind as well.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Clark, you know I'm a big supporter of what you're doing and I'm very thankful for, one, the work that you do and the fact that you came here today to tell us about it. I think the storytelling about the work that you do that happens within the FCSS program, very, very important for people to hear and understand. And like I say, you know, as a counselor and I guess as Reeve of Neheal County, how much support I have for what it is that you're doing. So I just want to say thank you. I appreciate, A, that you're here today, but I also appreciate that you're in our communities every day, working hard to help our youth and families to get better skills that interpersonal and all of those things that they need to have. So thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you. This work really means, means a lot to me and it touches a really special place in my heart, so.
I always loved the way you budget.
Me too.
Yeah, like all the way down to 67 cents.
I, yeah, I keep track of data of all sorts, so.
Anyway, thank you to both you and of course, Ms. Jackson Berry. We'll probably see you again here with a report on all of the FCSS. So again, thank you for being here today and thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
Enjoy the rest of your day. All right. We are going to go back in our agenda to 5.2.2, which is the Horseshoe Canyon merchandise.
So yes, this item I'm excited to bring to you, the Horseshoe Canyon Wholesale Merchandise Program. So this is a, was a pilot promotional program for Horseshoe Canyon that started in 2022. It supports the Strategy 9.2 of the Horseshoe Canyon Master Plan as adopted in 2024 to enhance brand recognition by utilizing an improved brand and logo and implement for wayfinding and promotion and advertising and merchandise. So this program offers purchased items for wholesale to retailers to promote Horseshoe Canyon and Neheal County to the public as a destination site, utilizing quality items branded with the approved Horseshoe Canyon logo and graphics. So far, the items that we have used has included t-shirts with the logo, stickers, iron-on patches, hats, key, and keychains with the graphic signs. The promotional items have been determined each year through collaboration and conversation with internal and external partners. In 2024, no project, products were purchased as the retailer's existing stock was sufficient for the season. The county expenses and revenue from the merchandise wholesale program is detailed in front of you. And so looking at 2022, we purchased 350 items, gathering a revenue of $2,600. 2023, we purchased 1,190 items, getting revenue of $2,726. So the wholesale and retailing pricing is based on the purchase cost and comparable product prices, allowing both the municipality and the retailer to achieve a reasonable rate of return while keeping costs attractive for customers. The product, the program's main objective that's been understood by administration is as promoting Horseshoe Canyon and Neheal County rather than focusing solely on revenue. By providing items wholesale to local businesses, this program allows local promotional benefits, limiting the county's investment in the retail space. For 2025, in the operational budget for parks, we have allocated $3,000 to continue the wholesale program to be fully recovered along with a modest profit, primarily aimed at
at local promotion, so if we just go down here, so these are the items that we're currently considering, so we will be doing another slate of shirts, so I had the version with the logo on it, these we'll be doing in the graphic, and then in a slate of colors as well, we'll also, looking at ball caps and folding outdoor hats, as well as cooling towels and water bottles, we're focusing on items that we think will be desirable for purchase at the canyon and use in the canyon, so, the final order makeup and the quantities of the merchandise will be determined through the collaboration with our partners. As far as staffing and financial implications, like I had mentioned, we designated $3,000 of our operating budget towards this, to be recovered in a cost-plus revenue, again, determined by the amounts we end up ordering through, for our retail partners. The internal staff efforts for this program include researching, purchasing, and setting prices for products, presenting to council, collaborating with the retailers, and the financial administration time for accounts payable and receivable as products are purchased and sold. Moving into our council options, we are looking at our recommended motion, being that council permanently established the merchandise wholesale program as part of the marketing strategies and service level for Horseshoe Canyon, to be approved annually through the budget process. Are there any questions?
Hey, thank you for that, Ms. Sherlock, are there questions regarding the Horseshoe Canyon merchandise presentation for Ms. Sherlock? Kelsey Cunningham.
So, through the Reeve administration, I'm just wondering, under council options, could I just get clarity on the permanently established, like, does that mean that we're not going to, like, review it every couple of years, or every year, like, permanent to me is, like, means forever and a day, so just looking for a little clarity on that.
Somebody want to define permanently? Mr. Hogan, please.
Through the chair, so in this context, it just means that it would form part of the budget each year, council is part of your budget review, could still be on topic if you wanted to be, it just, basically, it just means that we're dropping the pilot moniker.
Thank you for that clarification, are there any other questions or discussion related to the Horseshoe Canyon merchandise program?
I, I really appreciate the merchandise, I appreciate that almost every FCM I've been to, when I see them from Neale County, to go, oh, I saw Horseshoe Canyon, I've had at least one person comment almost every time I'm at a FCM, so, it is doing its work a bit, and, so, for that reason, I really like it, I also would like to see us expand the availability of it a bit, can we have opportunities for particularly staff and council, or people who are passionate about it, access that without having to go to the site, whether it's just set up a time, or, but, I know myself, I would like to utilize that more, and I think it's a great way for us to show unity as a county administration and council, as if we were all able to be utilizing those, those pieces of merchandise as well, to promote, promote how great we are, in my opinion. Having said that, though, regardless, this is awesome, and so therefore, I would like to make the motion to permanently establish the merchandise wholesale program as part of the marketing strategies and service level for Horseshoe Canyon, to be approved annually through the budgetary process.
Okay, so thank you for that, we now have a motion that we permanently establish the merchandise wholesale program, as part of the marketing strategies and service level for Horseshoe Canyon, to be approved annually through the budget process, so, to me, that means we will have a conversation around the amount being allocated to Horseshoe Canyon merchandise, and probably some reporting on how successful the previous year's program has been, so, very much appreciate the information, Ms. Sherlock, and so, we have the motion, is there further discussion, Counselor Phobes, sorry?
It's all good, I guess I'm struggling with the permanent establish this program, until we know what we're putting down there for a facility, how will we know what's going to be purchased by the people that are coming in, and are we putting too much money towards it, or not enough money towards it, how do you make it permanent, when you don't even know what we're doing down there yet, and if last year is an indication that they didn't need, it means they didn't have as many sales as they should have, or they purchased too much the year before, so I'm looking at it from all of that perspective.
Go ahead, Deputy Reed McGee.
Would the wording the motion help, so, permanently not meaning permanently forever, but, what if we said we established the program as part of the budgeting process, as opposed to a pilot program, so is there another way to, for me to change the wording, to take out that permanent, because that's what's making people nervous, that leads to much interpretation for people's own hot buttons, so, the point is, this will be approved annually through the process of the budget.
Counselor Penner, please.
I actually don't mind the word permanently, just because I want it brought back at every budget, so we can discuss the options, and what we've felt, we've seen around, you know, the countryside and things like that, so I, I don't mind the word permanently, it doesn't mean that it'll be continued forever and ever, it just means that it needs to be brought back and part of the budget discussions every year.
Mr. Hogan, do you want to provide some clarity?
To you, Mr. Reeve, I think if, in the recommended motion, if the, if the word permanently was removed, we'd have to say that, we'd have to alter established as well, that council established the merchandise wholesale program as part of the marketing strategies, and on and on, I think that would accomplish both goals, is it's removing the trepidation around the word permanently, which is only in this context to mean it's no longer a pilot project, so removing it doesn't pose an issue, or really alter the, it doesn't alter the core of the motion, but it does change the perception of it, perhaps, the, the rest of the motion is still that it would be approved annually through the budget process, so there's still a yearly review of it, which is, is what I believe I just heard Counselor Penner say was the, one of the items that you wanted.
Okay, so, your suggestion would be that the motion read that council establish the merchandise wholesale program as part of the marketing strategy and service levels for Horseshoe Canyon, and I guess, the concern being raised by Counselor Phobes around what might happen when we have our own facility there, this motion is referring to the wholesale program that we have in partnership with our partner at Horseshoe Canyon, so, it's not talking about what we might do in the future if we had our own facility there, but it's strictly related to what's happening with our partner at Horseshoe Canyon, and the wholesale side of what we're doing. Was there a reason why in 2024, nothing was, can you maybe provide some clarity there, Ms. Sherlock?
So, in addition to still having some stock available internally, that we were able to provide to him, we also had the discussions with the master plan going on, and that branding potentially changing.
Okay.
So, therefore, we provided him with what was the, the minimum needed, and we're waiting on that.
Okay, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions or comments related to the Horseshoe Canyon merchandise program, and the motion as it's been changed to read that council established the merchandise wholesale program as part of the marketing strategies and service level for Horseshoe Canyon, to be approved annually through the budget process? Any further discussion or question, if not, I'm going to call the question. Okay, I'm not seeing any, so I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor, opposed, motion is carried, thank you very much, Ms. Sherlock, I very much appreciate your time and effort in this. All right, now, I postponed, so I'm going to go backwards to 5.1.1, and thank you for your patience, oop, maybe I'm not going there. Are we prepared for that, or do you want me to go on in the agenda? Just grabbing her, okay. Sorry, I kind of jumped over it earlier, and so, I'd like to come back to it now, so. So this is bylaw 1917, redesignation from agriculture to light industrial.
Thanks for waiting.
When it comes to the mayor of Huxley, Alberta, what can I say?
The red carpet is out, anyways.
Welcome, Ms. Hay Morgan, Brandy, just take your time, and whenever you're ready.
Okay, let me grab the right folder, okay, this was the public hearing that you had at the last council meeting, and I'm just bringing it to you for second and third reading. The Paget Holdings is current land owner, landowner of the southeast 30, 3423, and they have granted Course Energy Corp. the authority to apply to increase the total generating capacity of the power plant from 4.95 megawatt to 9.5 megawatt, the additional electricity generated will be directed to the onsite cryptocurrency mining data center, which will be the subject of the municipal application, Course Energy Corp. has received approval from AUC to increase, increase to a 9.5 megawatt facility. Under the Municipal Government Act, applications for redesignation of land require a public hearing before the bylaw creating the new district can be adopted, the first reading of this proposed bylaw was given, given on April 8th, 2025, this is the mechanism for getting the application into the queue, all information and questions regarding the application were brought forward to the public hearing held on May 13th, 2025, as per the MGA, council must hear any person or group or persons claiming to be affected by the proposed bylaw. Any landowner who feels they will be impacted by a proposed development, either positively or negatively, has the opportunity to come and speak about the matter directly at the public hearing, affected parties could also submit their comments in writing, there were no letters of concern submitted, as council reviews and discusses the content of the public hearing, it can approve, amend, or defeat the proposed bylaw. The public hearing process is a legislated process, participating in the public hearing is the legislative method to provide comments to the council for consideration for applicants wanting to redesignate their lands, once a public hearing is closed, no additional information should be considered in the decision-making process, redesignations are about the proposed use, a redesignation establishes a land use district and is not a development permit, the redesignation focuses on the overall site suitability, and not the specific development conditions, the proposed site is approximately one mile north of the hamlet of Huxley, it is accessed via Highway 21 and Township Road 344, the applicants will place five generators, which will connect to a 10 data center containers, sorry, and the containers will also be stacked in two groups, this lease will be within the existing Course Energy Corp. footprint, and the entire workspace falls within the southeast 30, 3423 west of the four.
Okay, thank you for that, okay, are there any questions regarding the request that's in front of us, to consider additional readings to the bylaw 1917, redesignation from agriculture to light industrial? I'm not seeing any, so, if there are no questions, what is the wish of council? Counselor Phobes.
I move second reading of proposed bylaw 1917, for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808, by re-designating a portion of the southeast 30, 3423 west of the four, from agricultural district to light industrial district.
Okay, thank you for that motion, so, we're redesignating a portion of the existing site, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Christie.
Just curious, why are we not doing the whole site? I'm curious.
We did propose that to the applicant, they didn't want to, the, the oil site that's onsite isn't a permitted use in the egg district, it's specifically the cryptocurrency and data mining that does not allow it in the egg district, therefore, the redesignation.
Okay, thank you. And they're only using a portion of the site, so they just want to redesignate what they're using?
But we did make them that option, but they decided not to, so.
Okay, so, we do have a motion from Counselor Phobes, that council moved second reading of proposed bylaw 1917, for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808, by redesignating 1,473 meters squared on a portion of southeast 30, 3423 west of four, from agriculture district to light industrial district, any other questions or discussion related to the motion? If not, I'm going to ask the question, okay, I'm not seeing any, so all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously. So I would entertain a motion to do third reading, if that's the wish of council, Counselor Christie?
I'd make the motion to approve third reading of the bylaw 1917.
Okay, thank you for that, so, Counselor Christie made the motion that council move third and final reading of bylaw 1917, for the purpose of amending land use bylaw 1808, by redesignating 1,473 meters squared on a portion of southeast 30, 3423 west of four, from agriculture district to light industrial district, if there's no discussion, I'm going to ask the question, all those in favor, and that is carried unanimously, thank you, Ms. Hay Morgan, for-
Thank you.
-rushing in and joining us this morning, I know I messed up the agenda and jumped around, so, thank you for being here.
That's okay, thanks for waiting.
Yes, okay, I have had a request for a break, be aware that we have a photo opportunity at 9:50, so you have seven minutes, if you don't, and if you're not quick, you have six and a half minutes. Okay, it's 9:59, and I'm going to call our meeting back to order. We took a recess to do a check presentation for the Heskis Community Association, a project that they're doing that was previously approved by council. We are now at the point in time in our meeting where we have a scheduled public hearing for a bylaw redesignation 1918, and it's scheduled for 10 a.m. So I would entertain a motion to go into a public hearing. Council Phobes?
So moved.
Thank you for that. So we have a motion to go into public hearing. All those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. All right. So just a little bit of information here. Before I get to that, maybe I'll have council introduce themselves, because I know there are some people from the general public who are here today, so Council Cunningham, if you would please, you could start.
Good morning, Laurie Michelle Cunningham, Division 5.
Morning, Jerry Whitstock, Division 3, Hackney Linden area.
Good morning, Debbie Penner, Division 2, the Swallow area.
Good morning, I'm Ken King, and I represent Division 7, which is the northeast part of Neal County.
Hello, I'm Fay McGee. I represent Division 1, which is down in the southeast corner.
Carrie Phobes, Division 4.
Wade Christie, Division 6, the northwest corner.
Okay, so the process is, is that if you wish to speak, there was a speaker's list in the lobby, which is on its way to me. Thank you. The process is as follows. Administration will present the information. The speakers who, council will then have opportunity to ask questions. The speakers who are on the list will then be invited to speak to the issue. Once everyone who wants to speak has spoken, we will move on to any further questions from the council for the administration or the applicant, and then at the end of all of that, we will close this public hearing. I want you to know that we are being videoed and livestreamed, so if you're going to speak, you're going to need to come to the microphone. And other than that, I think that's all I need to say at this point. So, Ms. Hay Morgan, welcome, and when you are ready, please go ahead.
Awesome. Thank you. Good morning. I'm just waiting for the screen to screen.
Yep, no, there's no problem at all.
Well, that's an excellent question.
Yeah, it sounds nice. It's a perfect sound when you're a grandparent. Technical difficulties, story of our life.
Thanks for the agreement.
Not afraid to let himself be heard. Was that the magic touch?
Has it proven to be, yes.
Oh, wait a minute.
Yep, there we go.
I'm surprised they're not hearing footsteps. Here he comes. Takes them longer to drive. Look at that.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Wow, I'm just making you wait today.
So anytime you're ready, Ms. Hay Morgan.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. This is the public hearing for the redesignation from the Ag District to the Local Rural Commercial District, which is bylaw nineteen eighteen. Next slide, please. This was posted in the Three Hills Capital, April thirtieth, May seventh, May fourteenth, and May twenty-first. Notices were sent to adjacent landowners and referral agencies, and it was also posted on our Neale County website. This is also part of the MGA that we have to do that. The purpose of this is to reconsider the redesignation from the southwest twenty-nine, thirty-one, twenty-four, from the Ag District to the Local Rural Commercial District. The land redesignation is to allow for motor vehicle servicing, repair, and storage, which is the subject of this application. So this is a summary of the project. The measurements are showing the distance to the highway five eighty-three and the distance to the municipal boundary of the town of Three Hills, from its proposed location. So the site is on the south, is south of highway five eighty-three, which is approximately two miles, and is southwest of the, as the crow flies from the town of Three Hills. The residents and the grads are not to be included in this redesignation. The intent of this application is to allow for a maximum of fifty vehicles to be stored at the site. The vehicles will be disassembled at the applicant's Calgary location. This location will only be for vehicle storage and parts. No public will be attending the site, and this location will not be used as a storefront. The site will not be a wrecking yard. The parcel is a six point two-three acres in its entirety, with only four acres being re-designated to Local Rural Commercial. So the photo on the right is the redesignation area. So planning considerations today from the Municipal Development Plan, economic, is that the goal number two is to create opportunities that will provide a variety of development options that will diversify and strengthen the county's economy. And number, policy number nine out of the economic, out of the MDP, is all commercial and industrial uses will maintain high standards for visual appearance and will provide integration with surrounding land uses. This may include, but not limited to, screening, buffering, stormwater management, noise restrictions, and traffic impact assessments. Other planning considerations out of the MDP are economic and also environmental, so policy number eleven is economic. Through the land use bylaw, the county shall ensure that negative impacts are mitigated through adequate buffers of transitional land between industrial and non-industrial uses. And the environmental portion, goal number two from the MDP, is to mitigate environmental impact by ensuring development meets or exceeds provincial and municipal legislated requirements. Planning considerations from the land use bylaw eighteen oh eight, the definition of a motor vehicle servicing, repair, and storage is means of facility or an area for the maintenance of motor vehicle, motor vehicles, and includes the supply and sale of fuels, oils, lubricants, tires, and other parts and accessories, and the storage and protection of vehicles, both indoors and insecure screened compounds. Section one oh one, which is the Local Rural Commercial District, is where you will find the motor vehicle servicing, repair, and storage in its letter G in that district. Other planning considerations that we take in are type and scale of proposed use, suitability of the site for the proposed use, compatibility with the surrounding and existing future land uses, proposed accesses and impacts on the road system, emergency access, municipal service availability, adequacy of parcel size, consistency with statutory and non-statutory plans and land use bylaw, need and benefits of development to the community. And this is the Local Rural Commercial District. It would be a permitted use, letter G, if successful today, or not today, if successful when second and third reading are done. Here are the site photos from May fifteenth and May twenty-third. So the photos, as we go through these photos, the aerial on the left is where I'm going to indicate where we're looking. And so typically, there'll just be two pictures per slide. So photo number one, we are looking towards the west, where the vehicles are currently placed and stored on the property. Photo number two is looking south towards the road. And again, so in photo number one, I'm looking towards one of the older buildings on the property where they use for parts storage inside and around it. Photo number two, I went to the far corner of the property and took a photo towards as it sits today, or not today, as when the site inspections were done. Again, I looked to the south and to the east along the fence line, just to show, again, that the large area and where the vehicles are currently situated on the property. Photo number one is looking towards the northwest residence. They are the residents that wrote in, and they were concerned with the reflections of the vehicles into their window and had requested a fence. So that's just showing the proximity to the edge of the parcel. Number two, I drove to where the applicant's home is on the road and took a photo towards the site. And then, these are the site photos on the west boundary. And then, these are on May twenty-third, when I went back out after I realized I'd missed a few photos. So took photos looking towards the property on the east side, but would be facing west. And then, these are the photos from the east side looking north and into the property from the road. And then, photo number one shows the access into where the vehicle storage is. And then, just a photo number two is along the road, looking again at the property. The applicants have acknowledged that there are vehicles there without the permits. They, they were unaware that there was a process in place, and there has been education, and we've worked with them. They did put their application in, so just wanted to note that. Photo number one and two are looking from the west, east, towards the property. And then, photo number two is from the intersection, looking towards the property. So we received no letters in favor. We did receive four letters in opposition. A, B, and C, when you come to the next photo, you'll have them noted, A, B, and C on the map, and that's just their location. So, Mr. and Mrs. Johnston would like to see a fence installed. They were the ones with the concern in regards to the reflection off the lights, or the windows. Applicants, or, sorry, letters received from B are Mr. and Mrs. Main and Rick and Andrew Ethirio. They had concerns with traffic garbage and, starting before being permitted. And then, letter C was Marla Booty, Carrie Adams, and Kyle Smithers. Kyle Smithers lives in proximity to the property. The other two on the letters do not live out in the area, but are landowners around the parcel. We did have a concern noted from our Neale County Manager of Utilities, Mr. John McKeonan. He had concerns about waste being taken to our landfill. Neale County's landfill is a Class Three, and as we're all aware, we are struggling with capacity use. So he did want to have that noted, that they may be diverted. In conversation with the applicant, they, there won't be a lot of waste. It will, because they will be dismantled at their Calgary location. However, there may be sometimes, when vehicles come from auction, that there's garbage inside, that they do need to dispose of it. And that is all I have. This will be brought back to the June tenth meeting for the second and third reading. We will not be doing second and third reading today.
Thank you for that. Are there questions from council to administration?
Oh, I forgot that slide. There we go. Sorry. The A, B, and C.
Oh, the one you referred to as A, B, and C.
My apologies.
Okay.
So those are the applicants, or the letters that were received from the adjacent landowners.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, that is all I have now. Sorry.
No, it's quite all right. All right. Are there questions from council for administration? Councilor Cunningham?
So on November twenty-sixth of twenty-four, there was a request from these applicants to rezone this property from agriculture to light industrial. And then, on December tenth of twenty-four, that was canceled. I believe it was due to a missed residence, so the land use didn't conform. So I'm just wondering if you can outline what has changed in the applicant's plans from the previous redesignation request.
So the initial one to go to light industrials, they did want to do the disassembly of the vehicles at the site, due to the proximity of the residents. That cannot happen. So they've reworked their application and have made it so that they can disassemble the vehicles at their Calgary site. And they just need the storage of the vehicles that they purchase from auctions until they can take them to the Calgary location to be disassembled.
Councilor Cunningham, yes?
So I guess I just need to see the pictures, but from what I've seen, the disassembly of the vehicles is already occurring.
They're, so they're auctioned vehicles that were in accidents. So when they come to the site, they are not in the best condition.
So they're not, they're not disassembling, but they are storing parts on that property, right? So if they disassemble in Calgary, the parts that they are salvaging are being stored at this location?
Correct. Correct. Yes, thank you for clarifying. I didn't quite understand the question.
So the, the one picture that you showed of that one building in particular had doors and hoods or whatever lined up alongside of that. That's parts that have been taken off vehicles in Calgary and brought to this location.
So they have initially, when they, before they came through the process, there was disassembling happening. That is not happening any longer. The disassembling is happening in Calgary. When they purchase them at the auction, they're coming to the site. They are then being trucked when there's space provided at the Calgary location, disassembled there, and then the parts are coming out to be stored in the building. And they're working on getting them into the building. They're trying to get it set up inside, so eventually, everything will be inside. It's, it's a process.
Okay. So at one point, there was some disassembly happening on that property.
Prior to going.
Yes, no longer.
Yes, correct. Prior to going through this process, there has been education with the applicants.
Okay. Councilor Cunningham, any follow-up?
So I guess maybe through the reef to the CEO, I guess, so if I'm understanding, so they didn't have the proper permitting. So what, besides education, is there any recourse for the county to follow up on?
Mr. Hogan?
Through the chair. The, depending on the, depending on the type, there's different options that are open to the county. We've generally taken the education approach and working with the applicant to bring them into compliance. There are harder approaches that some municipalities have, can take. We do have some of those open to us if we choose to go down that path, but generally, we've wanted to work with the applicant to voluntarily bring them into compliance with the land use bylaw.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. Other questions for Councilor Forbes?
I guess I have a question around, Ken, I only think about this because of the storage one that's where I live. I never thought of it at that time. What are we doing for fire safety measures? Because if those catch on fire, my volunteer fire departments are going to show up there to do it. Is there room for a truck to get in and around those sites? I never thought about that when we did the last one, if a fire should take place.
So the general area that is being occupied right now is the footprint. It won't be any larger than that. They have asked for a bigger area. It is their hope, if approved and successful, that they could, down the road, when they have the finances, build a larger building to house more of the parts inside. However, currently, as it sits, this is where they are at. So yes, there would be room for emergency services to get in if required. There is an area outside of the redesignation where the home and the garage sit, that again, emergency services could move in there quite easily.
Okay, so, any other questions related to the redesignation from agriculture to local rural commercial for administration? Councilor Penner, please.
Just a good point with Councilor Forbes there. So down the road, we've got to take that into consideration when, and hopefully it happens for them, if, if this goes ahead, that they're able to expand and build a new shed, and we've just got to make sure as a council that there is enough room for our emergency services.
So, the redesignation process is what we're talking about today. Development permit application and the rest of that follows. So conditions can be placed on this property regarding access, fencing, hours of operation, screening, all of that stuff when we come to that point.
That is correct.
So today, what we're talking about is changing the use or the designation of use from agriculture to local rural commercial. Any further questions for administration? Councilor Cunningham?
Not a question, but more of a comment, and you hear this from me every time we do this. So I know when we do re-designate land, so for example, this one would be local rural commercial, and I do understand they would have to come to the county for a permit, but a permitted use would not have to come to the MPC. So when we look at permitted uses, there's stuff like a gas bar, so just so that we're aware. If this does get re-designated, it opens up a whole new amount of uses for this property, just so council's aware of that.
All right. If there's no further questions at this point in time for administration, the applicants are here and are on the list to speak, so... Sorry? Was there something?
I just had them sign in. They do want to speak, but I just had them sign in.
Yes, I was going to provide that opportunity at this point. So if, if you would like to come forward to speak to your application and provide information, this is your opportunity to do so. If you just want to introduce yourself, you push the button down and then, in front of you, it should turn red. And, yeah, there you go.
Okay.
Just if you want to introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name is Alex, and my wife, Nalini, were the applicants. Yeah, thanks for considering this. And just wanted to, there's a few concerns, I guess, that I wanted to address from the neighbors, right? One of them was excess traffic. Like I was saying, that there was going to be no, no people, no, no one, no customers coming to the property because we have a location around Calgary, the closer one. So this is mainly for like extra storage, because there is some storage over there also, but not enough storage. And so we'd like to use this place as a storage, right? And then, I think there was something about parking on the road. That was just contractors, they were renovating the house, so they parked on, on the side of the road. I already told them not to park there any, any longer. Oh, fencing, yeah, fencing, we could do fencing if, like if the permit is, goes through, then we can do the fencing, right? Oh, and then another thing is, I think someone was saying something about chop shop or anything like that, like, yeah, like I was saying, if, you know, anyone can want to come and check any of the VIN numbers or anything like that, there's nothing like that going on on the property. Because I know prior, there was prior tenants that were questionable, so I have nothing to do with them, I don't know them at all, so, yeah. Prior owners, I mean, sorry, of the property, right? So, yeah. And then also, if there's any concerns from the neighbors, they can pretty much just come and talk to me and tell me, you know, I'm flexible, we could, you know, fix it or whatever, whatever we got to do, right? So, yeah. Yep.
Okay. So, you're indicating that your vehicles are all being purchased legally?
Yes, of course. Yep.
And you're also saying you're quite approachable and...
Yeah, yeah, no, definitely.
...to talk to your neighbors.
Yeah, no, definitely. If anyone, you know, wants me to adjust something or whatever, I could, I could do that, right? So just talk to me and definitely, yeah.
Great.
Yep.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you, yeah.
So, is there anything else you'd like to share? Otherwise, I'm going to give council a chance to ask you...
No, that's pretty much it. I just wanted to say that, and, you know, yeah, just, yeah, thank you.
Well, thank you for being here today.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you guys.
If you would just, is there questions from council for, is it Cosmac?
Yeah, Cosmac, yeah.
Mr. Cosmac?
Alexander Cosmac, yeah, that's me.
Okay. Does somebody have questions? Councilor Cunningham?
Thanks for coming in. So just to confirm, so this site is going to be used for storage?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the roles that we have is, rate pairs have the ability to provide comments. So I know one of the comments, and they actually provided pictures, which was interesting for us.
Yep.
They did send a picture that said parts that are being created and... They did send a picture that said parts that are being created and prepared for shipping. So I just want to confirm if you have been doing that or you're currently doing that or?
Not currently doing that, but I, we did have some parts from before. Actually, prior, we were trying to apply for, so we could ship from here and dismantle here, but that wouldn't work. So like I said, we have a location in Calgary, so we kind of adjusted and we're just going to do that there and then just store stuff here. But I mean, when it's stored here, I would still have to pick it up from here and drop it. Like I do like eBay and stuff like that, right? So ship out even to like the US or whatever, so, yeah.
Do you have follow-up?
And this could maybe possibly be for planning. I think it said 40 to 50 vehicles. I think I've seen two different numbers, but anyhow. So how does the county monitor that? Like, do we have somebody that goes out to assure that there's not more than that or?
Just before we get to that question, let's deal with just the applicant at this point, and we'll go back to planning afterward if you don't mind.
Sure.
So are there any further questions for Mr. Cosmac? Okay, Mr. Cosmac, thank you for being here.
Thank you, yeah.
And very much appreciate your presence.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'll ask administration planners to come back so we can respond to additional questions. Okay, Counselor Cunningham, you had another question. Go ahead, please.
So within the applications that I've seen, it's anticipated 40 to 50 vehicles being stored. So how does the county monitor that and the ratepayers that are concerned about that, how can they be assured that there won't be 70, 80, 100, 150? Who monitors that? Who looks after that?
Okay, great question, actually. The applicants put down the number they want. So they're saying they need 50 vehicles for storage at max. We do go that that is what they need. If there did become over the numbers and people did start to notice, it would be complaint-driven. We would go out, make an appointment, and count the vehicles and address it from there. However, we do hope that the applicant would keep that under the 50, as that's what they've applied for, and so that was their need. If they needed to increase that, then that would be another, a development permit and an application from there.
Are there any other questions for administration from council regarding the application? Counselor Whitstock?
Thank you. Ms. Hay Morgan, could you go back to the slides, neighbors? Just, I thought the closest neighbor was around 2100 or 2200? 2125, that's the closest residence to that?
Correct.
Okay.
That would be the residence that was too close to allow them to be light industrial for the wrecking yard. And so, once we had realized that, then the application had to be withdrawn, and we are now proceeding this way.
Okay, so one is just under half a mile, the other one is just over half a mile?
Correct. Those are the ones we received comments from.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so there are more.
So are there any other residents within that?
Correct, yep. I don't have the pointer, but there are a few others, yeah, right there. We didn't receive any comments from them as well. But there, or more, those ones just indicate the ones that submitted comments.
Okay, yeah, all right, thank you for that. So I'm just wondering if there are any residents that are closer than the 2100 and 25 feet? If you know.
I didn't measure that. I could, we could run and go measure it.
Well, if they're just the pink dots, then I'm assuming that it's over, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, sorry.
What are you sorry for?
I don't have the information.
Oh, okay. That's fine.
Okay.
From the map, it appears that Residence C is probably the closest. Okay, any other questions for Counsel Cunningham?
So apologies, this maybe this should have been for the applicant, but we did have the information brought forward from Mr. McKernan, so I'm just wondering if there's anything we need to address in that, a couple of his concerns that he did bring up.
When I did receive the comment from Mr. McKernan, I had the conversation with the applicant, and he did indicate that anything that needed to be disposed of that would be large and not household garbage would be going to the Calgary landfill. But it shouldn't be very often. His only concern was that if they unloaded a car and a bumper fell off and was completely destroyed, he would then take it back to the Calgary location. But it would be very minimal. The household garbage would be, which would be normalized, they do have a residence there, and they're currently renovating the home, so.
So my assumption, again, household garbage would be dealt with same way as the rest of us who are currently rural residents deal with ours. And any other garbage that might be generated on that site could be addressed in the development permit process?
Correct.
Okay. All right, any further questions from council to administration? If not, I am going to remind us that at the close of the public hearing, there's no further information that will be accepted in terms of making the decision that goes forward from today. So unless I see somebody's hand, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 10:33, and I'm going to ask for a motion to go back into the regular council meeting. Counselor Christie?
Still moved.
Okay, thank you for that. We have a motion to return to the regular council meeting. All those in favor, the motion's carried unanimously. And again, thank you, Ms. Hay Morgan, and Mr. Cosmac, and Nalini. Thank you for being here today, and thanks for bringing your little partner there. There's a lot of grandparents at this table, we appreciate those noises, so thank you for being here today. Yeah. So does anybody need a break? Are we good to continue? All right. So we are at the point in our meeting where we are going to look at 6.1, which is the 2025 Property Tax Bylaw. And welcome, Ms. Nyman.
Morning.
And anytime you are ready.
Okay, so on April 8th, we brought forward the Property Tax Bylaw 1913. While we were doing our final checks and balances, an error was identified in the assessment amount used to calculate the Neill Housing Corporation's mill rate. As a result of this error, we are asking to repeal that bylaw, the 1913, and to pass the Property Tax Bylaw 1921 to reflect and correct the Neill Housing Assessment and Mill Rate amounts. And that would allow us to issue the mailing of the combined assessment and tax notice by June 1st. So what I'm asking, for the council options, we're just requesting that council gives first, second reading to bylaw 1921 as presented and grants unanimous consent to proceed with third reading. And that is just to fix that calculation error that we had on the bylaw 1913.
Okay, so my assumption is if we pass bylaw 1921, that the other ones automatically repealed?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and then it would be accurate.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions regarding the request here this morning to make the correction from the assessment amount? If not, I would entertain motions to move forward with the request from administration. Deputy Ree McGee?
Thank you for bringing this forward, so we have a nice, accurate bylaw. And therefore, I'd like to move that we give first reading to bylaw 1921 as presented.
Okay, so we have a motion to give first reading to bylaw 1921, the 2025 Property Tax Bylaw. Any discussion? Okay, not seeing any, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, that's carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Oh, we're not done yet. If you don't want to send out those tax notices, we could be done.
You do?
She's like, I'm done, I'm out of here. Counselor Penner?
Gosh, it's good to laugh sometimes.
It's good to have fun.
Yeah, I'd make the motion that council provide second reading, second reading be given to bylaw 1921, that being the 2025 Property Tax Bylaw.
Okay, thank you for that, Counsel Penner. So we have a motion that we provide second reading to bylaw 1921, which is the 2025 Property Tax Bylaw. Any discussion? Don't see any, all those in favor. And that is carried unanimously. Counselor Christie?
I'd make the motion that grant unanimous consent to proceed to third reading of bylaw 1921.
Okay, thank you for that. So we have a motion that council grant unanimous consent to proceed to third reading of bylaw 1921. Any discussion? Okay, ask the question, all those in favor, and that's carried unanimously. Counselor Whitstock?
I would move that council give third reading to bylaw 1921.
All right, thank you for that. So now we have a motion that council provide third reading to bylaw 1921, the 2025 Property Tax Bylaw. All those in favor? And that's also carried unanimously. So now, Ms. Nyman, you have permission to go forward.
Now it's more appropriate, thank you.
You're quite welcome. Thank you for being here today. All right, the next item on our agenda is 6.2, Temporary Approval of Electronic Funds Transfer for Accounts Payable. Welcome, ladies.
Good morning, we even council. I just have Haley Atkins from Accounts Payable here with me, just as a little bit of a learning opportunity, what it's like to be in front of council. So today, I'm bringing forward the request to temporarily approve electronic fund transfers as a method of payment for some of our accounts payable transactions in the event of a postal disruption. This is coming forward in light of the on-again, off-again discussions with Canada Post and their union and the potential strike. Essentially, during the previous postal disruption, we saw significant increase in our workload due to the inability to mail out checks. The vast majority of our payments to our vendors is through check. We do have some exceptions with pre-authorized withdrawals for our utilities or lease payments. And then we do try to utilize credit card where possible. However, there are still quite a few that are being paid through check. So when a strike happens, we do run into issues with getting those vendor payment out, payments out. We did have multiple options that we tried to work through as we were essentially working in a reactionary process. We didn't know how long the strike was going, but it still resulted in a lot of excess time to follow up with all the vendor inquiries, keep in touch with late or missing payments, and then therefore reissuing a lot of checks because they were just lost in the mail or we really don't know what happened. So in order to get ahead of that, we are hoping to have EFTs as a temporary payment method if we were to see a strike happen. This is a method that we are hoping to offer on a more permanent basis moving forward. We're just currently in developing the policy changes that are required to allow it on a more permanent basis. So that will be coming forward to council in the future. And then currently, our policy does not explicitly allow or disallow EFTs, so that's why this approval is coming forward today. Any questions?
All right, so thank you for that. Are there any questions regarding this request? Counsel Forbes, please.
I guess, just remind me, through the chair, if someone uses a credit card, there is a percentage that they have to be charged. Is that correct?
Through the chair, that's a good question. We do charge a convenience fee when someone pays us, but this is to us paying vendors. So some vendors may pay a convenience charge, some may not, some don't accept credit cards, and some, the payments are just way too high above our limits to even allow a credit card payment.
I'm just thinking about my ratepayers that are sitting in a place where if they don't, if they're coming into, because the mail strike is on, that's all. Thank you.
So the concern you're raising is related to ratepayers who might want to be making payments?
Correct.
In the same timeframe?
Correct. Because that is a question I have.
Okay. Are there any other questions related to the request that's in front of us? If not, oh, sorry, Counsel Cunningham?
Oh, no, that's okay. No, I was prepared to make the motion. I was just going to ask, do we, like, are we okay with the temporary wording there? Or did we want to put a timeframe, or do you just want to stick with temporary?
The motion specifies during postal disruption.
Okay, so for the temporary.
So it is specific to a specific event.
Perfect.
And Ms. Olson has suggested we would be seeing a policy coming forward in the future related to a more permanent use, right?
Through the chair, yes, the policy is under the works, and we're working on refining our processes and controls to allow it on a more permanent basis very soon.
Do you have follow-up?
No, that's perfect, that's great clarification. So I'll make the motion that council approves the temporary use of electronic fund transfers for accounts payable during postal disruptions, and that a payment of EFTs over $50,000 be provided to the REVE for review following payment.
I think that's the process that we have for over $50,000 payments currently, is that?
That is correct. That's why it's in there to allow, and just to clarify that it will be following payment. We currently have that review happening before checks are released, but we can't do that with EFTs, so just wanted to add that clarification. It's in alignment with our check process.
So what if I'm upset and say no? Too late. All right, no, no problem. Okay, so we do have a motion that council approved temporary use of electronic fund transfers, EFTs, for accounts payable during postal disruptions, and that a payment register of EFTs over $50,000 be provided to the REVE for review following payment. Any question to that motion? Thank you, Counsel Cunningham. Deputy Ree McGee?
Sorry, I'm confused. So normally, if it's a check, you have to have the permission before you issue the check. What makes it difficult to do that in this process?
It's the actual sending out of the check, sorry, through the chair, the actual sending out of the check. So in both, the payment is being issued, but we have, when there's a physical check being printed, the payment's issued and we can hold it. Whereas the EFT, we could technically hold it from the bank, but the remittances get sent out through our system immediately. So vendors are being notified once that check is kind of, the remittance is created, so then they're going to be waiting on it. And the EFT system really only holds it in there for a certain amount of time. With that being said, we do have an internal process where it is being reviewed before that stage. So we do have a segregation of duties where one person uploads and another different person of approval authority releases it from the system prior to it leaving.
I really appreciate hearing that, thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
Any further questions before I call a question on the motion to approve? Okay, so the motion is that we approve temporary use of electronic fund transfers for accounts payable during postal disruption, and that a payment register of EFTs over $50,000 be provided to the REVE for review following payment. All those in favor? And that's carried unanimously, so thank you.
Thank you.
All right, the next item on our agenda is 7.1, which is a master rates bylaw. And I have you, Ms. Vanderkuul, as being the presenter. And I have you, Ms. Vanderkuul, as being the presenter.
Yes, thank you. So today I am presenting the master rates bylaw. The master rates bylaw outlines all fees, charges, and rates that Neehill County imposes for its services, utilities, licenses, and permits. Serves as a central reference for residents, businesses, and staff to understand the costs associated with municipal services, and ensures consistency and transparency in how these fees are applied. The last time this document was presented to counsel was in January, when it was updated to incorporate budget-related changes. Since then, administration has requested that it be brought forward again this year to include additional updates. As a result, we have a new, a few new proposed fees that are outlined in attachment A. These include fees related to the Planning Department, Planning and Development Safety Code fees, Utilities and Environmental Services, which address sewage charges for the residents in Huxley to clean out their septic tanks. And under Operations, we have a new fee for snow removal for rural community centers that was decided at the March twenty-fifth council meeting. Before I go into changes to the existing fees, are there any questions about these new fees?
I'm not seeing any at this time.
All right, so our proposed changes to existing fees. So under Safety Code fees, previously there were two separate fee schedules, one for contractors, one for homeowners. The Planning Department proposes combining these into a single schedule and aligning the fees with neighboring municipalities. During the RFP process for safety codes, it was noted that Neehill County's fees are below market rates. Incremental increases are proposed to better reflect the cost of doing business with a more comprehensive review planned for next year. Under the desk, we also added desk control rates. Adjustments have been made to reflect the rates approved by counsel during the April twenty-second meeting. County map descriptions, the map sizes in the description section have been updated from thirty-two inches to thirty-six inches. While the price remains unchanged, the description now reflects the current standard. Under Parks and Cemeteries, we have firewood fees increase. The cost of firewood bundles at campgrounds is proposed to increase from ten dollars to fifteen per bundle. This change reflects the rise in the county's purchase cost for firewood this year. As this bylaw, as this is a bylaw, it requires three readings by counsel to take effect. If all three readings are to be completed in one sitting, unanimous consent will be required to proceed to third reading. This concludes my report, and I'm happy to address any questions you may have. Additionally, we have some managers and directors here to assist with specific inquiries.
Thank you, Ms. Vanderkuul. All right, are there any questions regarding the changes to the master rates bylaw? Deputy Reeve McGee.
Through the REE, I'm curious, specifically for firewood, but there's probably other places where this question would apply. Are you putting the cost of the actual firewood, but not in the cost of our, being able to provide that service and have it available now? All the extra costs that come to having firewood available? For example, how do you come with that fifteen dollars?
So currently, from, I received from the manager of Parks and Cemeteries that we actually purchased the bundle for twelve dollars, and we're selling it at fifteen. So there's a three-dollar cost for administration and the cost of getting it out there and.
Yes, great. Good to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Gannon, was there, that was sufficient? Okay. Any other questions related to the change in the master rates bylaw? If not, I would be looking for some motions to approve the changes and to establish the new master rates bylaw. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to move that we give first reading to bylaw nineteen twenty, that being the bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various operations, products, permits, and services.
Okay, thank you for that, Deputy Reeve McGee. The motion is that counsel give first reading to bylaw nineteen twenty, that being a bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various operations, products, permits, and services. Any discussion to the motion? Counselor Cunningham.
Sir, can you just remind me, and I might have missed it, but are we still, is the private laneway snow plowing still part of that? Masters? Oh, she can answer for me.
I can, because it's in front of me right now. It's under greater, under description, private laneway and snow plowing services per hour is still two twenty.
All right, any other questions, concerns? If not, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that motion is carried unanimously. Thank you. Counselor Phobes.
I'd make the motion to do second reading to be given to bylaw nineteen twenty, that being a bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various operation, products, permits, and services.
Thank you very much. Counselor Phobes, we have a motion to give second reading to bylaw nineteen twenty. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Counselor Whitstock.
I would move that we give consent for third and final reading of nineteen twenty.
Thank you, Counselor Whitstock. So we have a motion that counsel give unanimous consent for the third and final reading to bylaw nineteen twenty. Assume no discussion. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously. Thank you. Deputy Reeve McGee.
I'd like to move that third reading be given to nineteen twenty, that being a bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various operations, products, permits, and services.
Okay, thank you, Deputy Reeve McGee. We now have a motion that we give third reading to bylaw nineteen twenty, that being the bylaw to establish rates, fees, and charges for various operations, products, permits, and services. If there's no discussion, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And that is also carried unanimously. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is disposition of delegation and business. And the item there is the Neehill Regional FCSS Community Support Program Annual Report. And Ms. Vanderkuul.
So Shelley Jackson and Michaela Clark presented earlier today. The information they provided was to counsel was for informational purposes only, so we just, unless there's any direction counsel wants to give us, we're asking that counsel make a motion to provide this for information.
Okay, thank you for that. Any further discussion, question, or comment related to the item that's in front of us? Deputy Reeve McGee.
I, I'm just a, a big advocate for this type of program. Anything FCSS does is just so critical to a healthy community and healthy democracy. And so, having said that, I think we also need to congratulate this program. I wish I had said that when the ladies were here. The data is outstanding, and I really appreciate having that data available. And I am going to make a plea out to whoever's listening and whoever else I could talk to following this. Please, we have the good luck, bad luck of having a couple more reelections in our areas. And this is a great opportunity to say, to strengthen this program. The funding is so hard to scrape together, and I think the more we can plug, that this creates a basis for a strong community, and that this needs to be regarded with our, all levels of government, the better we are. And please use this data. It's public information now. Please find ways for us to stay strong.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any other comments or questions related to the item in front of us? I would entertain a motion to receive as presented, if that's the wish of counsel. You got me. Counselor Penner.
Thanks for the promotion.
Do you want the promotion?
So moved.
Motion to receive for information. Counselor Penner, thank you for that. The motion is counsel receive for information, the Neehill Regional Family Community Support Services, Community Coach Annual Report and Presentation. Just comment I'll add is that we soon will be seeing the compiled FCSS annual report, and we've seen previously the Family Wellness Worker Report. Lots of data in all of those. So, thank you for the motion. Any further discussion? Not all those in favor? And that's carried unanimously. The motion was from Counselor Penner. Okay, the next item in our agenda is counsel and committee reports. And I'll turn this over to you, Deputy Reeve McGee, with Division One report.
I don't have much more to add, other than I just am wanting to verbalize, I'm very encouraged with the future where Kate is going. We had a few bumps coming into this last couple of years, really. And I think we have done the work to get a good foundation established for us to see some great gains. In the next year, we'll have a very different, exciting, long list of outcomes to report. I'm very optimistic. The AGM is very good. If you have any questions, I'm glad to answer them.
Okay, thank you for that. Are there any questions regarding Deputy Reeve McGee's report? If not, I'll move on to you, Counselor Christie, Community Futures.
Community Futures, Neehill County's fallen behind nominations for Heart of the Community program, so they're still open. So if you can think anybody on the west, east side of the county to nominate, get at her. And it doesn't have to be counselors, it can be any customers to nominate anybody, so that's still open. The other thing, the annual general meeting's at the Strathmore Legion on June the nineteenth, where we're inviting the CEO. If he's unable to attend, we would invite the alternate, which I think is Faye, so between the two of you. That's all I have for now.
Okay, June nineteenth.
Yes, at five o'clock at the Legion.
Five o'clock at the Legion. And that's Community Futures Wild Rose Annual General Meeting. Okay, thank you. Any questions for Counselor Christie? If not, I'd entertain a motion to receive for information. Counselor Phobes.
So moved.
Okay, thank you for that, Counselor Phobes. Counsel, except for information, the counsel and committee reports as presented. All those in favor? That's carried unanimously as well. Thank you. The next item in our agenda is counsel follow-up action list, number ten. Is there anything coming out of the counsel follow-up action list that you would like to ask about? Okay, well, I assume that there isn't, so I would entertain a motion to receive for information as presented. Counselor Christie.
So moved.
Thank you for that. So, the motion is that counsel receive for information, the counsel follow-up action list as presented. Counselor Christie. And if there's no discussion, all those in favor? And that is carried unanimously. The next item in our agenda is a closed session item, so I would entertain a motion to go, how about, does anybody want a break? All right, let's take a ten-minute recess. So that means we are back at eleven eleven.